The third day of the sixth regular session of the 20th Congress will now come to order. May I ask that we all rise for a moment of silent prayer? Okay, Chief Clerk, call the roll.
Senator Alek, Senator Arretoz, Senator Figuerre, Senator Coland, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Ned, Senator Panuelo, Senator Berman, Senator Romallo, Senator Urusamal, Senator Wally, Speaker Semena. Mr. Speaker, nine members are present.
We have quorumed the transact business. Those who are absent are excused. Floor Leader Harper, reading of the Journal.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good morning to you and all honorable members as well as our staffs and all those who are observing our session this morning. As usual, Mr. Speaker, I move to dispense with the reading of the Journal.
Second. It's moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of our journals today. Those in favor say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the Journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item five, presidential communications. We do not have any.
Okay, continue.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, none. Item seven, member communications, none. Item eight, departmental communications, none. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, we do not have any. Item ten, state communications, none. Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none. Item twelve, municipal or town communications, none. Item thirteen, foreign government communications, none.
Okay, order of the day. Standing Committee Report, first report.
Mr. Speaker, for item fourteen, standing committee reports, we do not have any.
Next item.
Item fifteen, special committee reports, none also.
Item sixteen.
Item sixteen, for assignment of measures and communications, we have a referral sheet number 20-97.
Okay, members and chairman, review that for your planning purposes. Next item.
The next item is item seventeen, unfinished business, none, Mr. Speaker.
Point of privilege, Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader, state your point.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise on a point of privilege this time to ask the intelligence of this Congress to recognize all those who are observing our session this morning and especially one of our attorneys from Chuk, who is also observing our session this morning, Ben Enlet. Let's give them a round of applause.
Any further?
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Floor Leader Harper. Of course, our friend, Mr. Enlet, is always welcome to observe our session. Okay, any other point of privilege?
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Senator Aldis.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I also want to introduce a friend of mine who is observing our morning session. His name is Rano Rokup. Thank you, Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Rokup is welcome. He's our constituent. Okay, any other point of privilege?
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Senator Coleman.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I also rise on the point of privilege to also introduce for recognition also another individual who is also observing our session this morning by the name of Takasi Aym. I ask that we please give him a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Coleman. Yes, that constituent of ours is always welcome to join and observe our session. Okay, any other point of privilege? Well, I guess Chairman Panuelo is not here. He's champion of privilege. Okay. Next item, Bill Calendar, first bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The first bill is CB number 20-273 for second and final reading. CB number 20-273 is a bill for an act to appropriate the sum of $600,000 from the General Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2019, for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs in the state of Chuk and for other purposes.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. I don't think we finished the breakdowns, right? The Chuk delegation, you're willing to do it tomorrow before we leave so you can go down and tell your constituents that you have some money coming? Yeah, we do it tomorrow, huh? Is that okay with you? Okay. So just defer to tomorrow's calendar. Oh, yeah? For Coland's share or Romallo's share? Oh, that sounds tempting. I hope not.
You can move it up, but don't call any special session until...
And I hope Chief Clerk will reprocess their TA because they're missing few days already.
Thank you, Chairman. So we can bag you, just defer. I think also the 274, right? So Chairman Figuerre, you will have to defer those two. Yes, to tomorrow because I guess some members haven't done their... I know you've done yours for, yeah, for both of you. Okay. Congress is back in session. We're still on CB 20-273. Chairman Figuerre.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move to defer the following bills to tomorrow's Bill Calendar, CB number 20-273 and CB number 20-274.
Second. It's moved and seconded that the two following bills, 20-273, 20-274, be deferred to tomorrow's calendar. Those in favor say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Those two bills are now deferred to tomorrow's calendar. Okay, next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 20-275 for second reading. CB number 20-275 is a bill for an act to amend sections 1, 2, 3, 8, and 9 of Public Law number 20-131 to appropriate $3,358,000 of additional funds from the General Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2019 to provide funding for the operations of the national government of the Federated States of Micronesia, various programs, grants, subsidies, and contributions in capital and human resources development and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
I move for the process of Congress Bill 20-275 on first and second and final reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number 20-275. Discussion.
Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair.
All right, Speaker, we're good to go.
Chairman Figuerre, I have that minor amendment. It's a small one. It's just changing a lot of the certain line item. Yeah, it's just changing the C. Avon charter, but the spelling was wrong. It's not Haven, it's Avon. And then just change a loti from governor to the Congress Speaker. Okay. And when you have the one for our most important constituents, the women? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry?
You're doing the allotment version of the allotment version of this bill. Cause I, I don't see cause I section three in here.
On which page are you looking at? That's my proposed amendment?
Yeah.
And which page you're referring to?
Okay, okay. My bad, I see. Thank you.
It's okay?
Yeah.
Speaker, while Lamb is lobbying, let me explain what we're gonna do with the floor amendment to the this bill. Okay, when we go in, the motion is to pass on second and final reading. I'm gonna offer an amendment. It can either be read by the Chief Clerk or we can just insert in. Then Chairman Arretoz will offer his floor amendment following mine. And then after if we adopt his amendment, then I will offer one last amendment to adjust the figures and include some funding for the women. Then after that, you can do the amendment for the allotment section.
Yeah, I think for the allotment, there's some technical problems, so they're going discussing what to do about that.
But that's how we're gonna do things in order.
That's a good order of doing the amendments.
So maybe my first amendment, we just insert into the record.
Oh, it will be...
Or let her...
If you want to dispense with its reading, you can ask for that.
Yeah, and then because the Arretoz amendment will already take care of that amendment, and then I'll do the last one, which is a small one. Is that okay with you all and we don't confuse?
All right. How come I don't see Arretoz's amendment? Is he gonna offer it orally or? It's in here?
Okay, on the allot, it seems like we don't have much information about it, so we'll disregard that. So we have only three amendments to go. Got it, Chairman? Okay. Congress is back in session. We're still on CB 20-275. Discussion. Chairman Figuerre, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I have an amendment that I wish to offer, and I believe the amendment has been printed, duplicated, and distributed. Two members may ask that we do away with the reading of the proposed floor amendment. Second, so I move for the previous question, and that is to adopt the floor amendment being duplicated and distributed.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that the offered for amendment to CB 20-275 offered by Chairman Figuerre be adopted. Because of its length, we will dispense with its reading. It's been written up and distributed to members so it can be inserted in the records. I mean, Floor Leader Harper, motion to suspend?
Yes, Speaker. I move to suspend any relevant rules that may impede our action on the amendment.
It's moved and seconded that any relevant rules, specifically the rules prohibiting substantive amendments on second and final reading, be suspended. Those in favor say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. The relevant rules are suspended. So there is that offered amendment. Any discussion on it? Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the offered for amendments to CB 20-275 offered by Chairman Figuerre say yes, opposed nay. Motion carried. The offered for amendments are adopted. We now have draft one. Continue discussion on draft one. Senator Arretoz.
Thank you, Speaker. I also have a floor amendment to offer. It's been duplicated and distributed. I would like to ask Chief Clerk to read.
Okay, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, we have a floor amendment to CB number 20-275 CD1 offered by Senator Twitter Arretoz. Item one of his amendment on page nine, line 21, delete the figure 440,000 and insert the figure 450,000 in lieu thereof. Item two of his amendment on page 10, line 2, following the phrase contractual services, insert code, I mean comma, of which up to $10,000 may be used to pay for outstanding prior year applications. Item three of his amendment on page 10, line 2, delete the figure under 10,000 and insert the figure under 20,000 in lieu thereof. Item four on page 17, following line 6, insert subitem lowercase s Carolina Island Air subsidy 200,000. Item five on page 22, line 14, delete the figure 1,500,000 and insert the figure 1,750,000 in lieu thereof. Item six on page 22, following line 14, insert the following sub lowercase h dialysis machine Ponte State Hospital, 140,000.
Make motion for adoption. It's moved and seconded that the offered for amendments to CB 20-275 CD1 offered by Senator Arretoz be adopted. Discussion. Short recess, subject to call of the chair.
Speaker, on that airline, Carolina Island Air?
No, that's not... Can we treat it as a technical? It's Caroline, not Carolina. Somebody's thinking about somebody's name.
That's okay. I'm more concerned about the dialysis. Is this enough, the 140,000? I thought you mentioned something about 300,000. How many machines we can purchase with this?
One.
Just one?
Well, because of the insufficient fund, we decided to go with one and supplies, but in general, a matter that we need to revisit when we come back, if there's a special session and we know there's money. But at least we should get one working.
But I thought the cost...
What's our balance?
The cost of a dialysis machine is 20-plus thousand.
55.
55? So this can be...
Should be for two or...
55 for one. But we're adding supplies to it because not only the machines, but they're gonna need supplies to run it.
Components there. Okay.
But that one can take care of all these dialysis patients?
That's why I asked the question because we have, we know we have some users of the dialysis. And one is probably, who are you going to give that choice to make? Who's going to be on the machine and who's not? That's a moral question.
Well, Mrs. Speaker, I consulted with the chairman of money, and this is what we have as of now. Unless, unless you're willing to do away with the land in Guam and let's just do the 100%.
Well, I guess the part of my question is, what has Pompe decided to come up with? I know we're coming up with this much. Will Pompe be willing to come up with like another 140,000 or to match this?
I met with two senators yesterday regarding, and one is the vice chairman of health, and they're completely broke. That's coming from them.
From Pompe?
Pompe.
Pompe state completely broke? I find that hard to believe, but yeah, I'm just asking this. Oh, no, this is an emergency thing for us. We're just trying to see how we can help. But if that's the case...
If we can do 200, that'd be good.
We'll revisit the issue in March, I mean, our next special session.
Well, I think this can handle the issue right now and can handle two patients.
Okay.
One, two patients, yes, for now. What they're asking is five patients. Supplies for the whole year, two patients only.
How many patients we have?
According to them, five.
And who decide?
So then it's not enough.
Question by Speaker, who decide who goes first?
That's the philosophical dilemma, moral dilemma we have to deal with. Which one of these five will be using the machine? And I don't want to, Congress, to be playing that, hey, Congress didn't put up enough money. I know, it's just something I, well, personally, I really don't feel comfortable doing that.
Speaker, I'm willing to sacrifice my public project fund for two machines, and I hope they will prioritize more lucky's residing in Pompe.
Are there more lucky's? Of course, there will be more lucky's. Well, that's one of her from...
Well, Speaker, when I was talking with the chairman this morning, we thought this amount could help with the immediate need in March. If we're gonna have a special session and there's more money, we'll have to... In the meantime, the Department of Health will be working with Pompe State Hospital. That's what we agreed on. But it's a matter that needs urgent attention.
Well, I'll go along with that. I have no problem, but I'm just worried about who's going to make the decision, who will be on, who will not be on.
Chairman, you say that's more than enough for just one?
This is a classic moral question.
No, I didn't say more than enough. I says for now, we...
No, enough for one.
We will be the cut.
The supply is for two people.
The supply is for two people for one year. So if you cut it down to six months, that will be able to accommodate five people for six months.
Okay, so that's a way of mitigating the... And by that time, we should have enough money to fund.
This is for only one machine, right? Plus supplies?
Well, according to chairman of ways and means, he says it will coming back diamonds in two months' time, March, if we have money. So I'm hoping that this about $80,000 can accommodate the five patients for two months. And then when we come back in March, then we can take care of the rest.
Well, thank you. I think that's, we should keep that in mind and stick to that commitment.
Speaker, we have to understand that the supplies can be enough for those five patients, but the problem is the machines. Each patient will be on the machine for four hours. So how can they accommodate all the five within one day?
That is... Maybe they go 24 hours.
That is actually correct, but when we, when I saw the proposal that they brought up, it says one machine for 55. So that's what they brought up. One machine, supplies for five patients, and training, but I didn't put the training in there for three months, two nurses.
Well, maybe they can reduce the supplies to six months as suggested by Senator Ned, and that maybe they can buy two. Two, and even for three months because I am sure by that time, we should have enough money to fund the other machines, additional machines. And I think we should take this seriously because it's the only hospital where we have dialysis machine in the FSM. Okay, so let's get back. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion of the offered for amendments by Senator Arretoz. Any further discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote those in favor of the adoption of the offered for amendments to CB 20-275 CD1 by Senator Arretoz. Say yes, opposed nay. Motion carried. Let the records reflect that the relevant rules are still suspended. Okay, we have CD2.
Speaker.
Continue discussion on CD2.
Mrs. Speaker.
Chairman Figuerre.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I have a very small amendment that I wish to offer, and I would do it orally.
Proceed.
So the proposed amendment that I'm offering, I hereby offer the following proposed amendment, and they are as follow. On page, item one, page 22, line 14, delete the figure 1,750,000 and insert 1,700,000 in lieu thereof. Item two, page 22, following line 14, insert under a small i in parentheses, Office of Women's I so move.
It's moved and seconded that the offered oral amendments by Chairman Figuerre be adopted. Short recess, subject to call of the chair.
Can we take that 52 women and give it to the dialysis machine?
We're okay with that dialysis.
It's already passed. It's already...
Woman from where? What state?
What's the name of the office? I think it's called FSM National Women's Council. That's the official name, I think. They can, okay? So Chief Clerk, make the correction. It's the FSM National Women's Council.
Is that created by law? Because I understand that only Chuk has a woman council created by law.
Wait, wait, wait.
Office, I forgot about it. Women's, FSM Women's?
FSM National Women's Council. That's the group you always fund at every year, for the two conference.
I hated them, but then now it's getting close to elections, so I now I'm thinking about women.
You have to love them now even more. That's the idea, so. And yeah, it's FSM National Women's Council. Okay? Oh, you have to help them. Otherwise, there will be a revolution. Well, this one is not new money. It's just from, taken from one. So see, the chairman can do tricks. Okay, Chief Clerk?
So when we go back, we're gonna have a discussion on the proposed oral amendment, and I'll just say?
Well, you have to make a motion for adoption.
Okay. Oh, I did. I said, so move.
Oh, okay. Is it? Journal clerk? He, he made a motion for adoption? Okay.
Journalists, don't just be afraid of Chairman Figueroa, and you know that. I would like to ask that we retain this two hundred for CIA.
Okay, we just come back, and you restate the name of the, because the rest is okay, Let's just wait for our staff there. Did anybody order food today? Congress is back in session. We're still on the offered oral amendments by Chairman Figueroa. They've been already moved. It's been moved and seconded for its adoption. Just restated the, the name of the organization?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. The, on the, the third, on the third item that I, on the amendment that I made, the correct name of the, the organization is FSM National Women's Council, fifty thousand.
Okay. Thank you for the correction. Discussion on the offered amendments. Any discussion? Floor Leader Harper?
Thank you, Speaker. Just a minor question. Is the council created by law or what is it?
It is a non-private organization, which is the official organization of all the women's councils in the states, and they get together. And I think we just funded their last conference, which was held here in Pompe. And this is the product of their, they want to create the office for that. So this is for their operations. Okay, any other discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. Let the record reflect that the relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. So let's vote those in favor of the adoption of the offered oral amendments by Chairman Figueroa say yes. Abols nay. Motion carried. The offered oral amendments are adopted. We now have draft three. Okay, any further discussion on draft three? Discussion?
Move for the previous question.
There is no objection. It's been moved that debate be closed, and there being no objection, so let it be. It's closed. So let's vote by recall of delegations. Chairman Perman, you'll cast a vote for Pompe.
State of Juke, Chairman Aritos. State of Pompe, Chairman Perman. State of Koshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Figueroa. Mr. Speaker, all the four states voted in favor.
For that reason, Bill number twenty dash two seventy-five CD three has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill?
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Any other bill you, oh, we don't have any, we don't have ten. So any first reading for the day would be out of the question. Any resolutions that you want? We go down? Okay?
There are no resolutions, Mr. Speaker.
So let's go back. Congress back in session. We're still on the bill calendar. If there's no more bill, next item. Chief Clerk?
Item nineteen, resolution calendar. There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item twenty, introduction of bills and resolutions.
Okay, if you have any measure to introduce, please pass them on to Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item twenty-one, miscellaneous communications on receipt of one and its number twenty dash forty-two.
Okay, sign that, Chief Clerk. Yes, for Leader Harper?
Yeah, thank you, Speaker. Relative to this communication, I just want to simply ask if you can ask the participants of the workshop to hold the workshop here, so that all the other staffs that didn't go and the rest of the members who are willing to also, you know, learn the business skills writing, we can participate also here in Pompe.
Well, it's a good idea, but it's a boring workshop. I mean, I don't know that you'd like to sit in. But it's very useful to our staff, and I think that's the important objective. Okay, any other comments on the miscellaneous communication? If not, we go down to miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous business? If none?
Speaker.
Yes, for Leader Harper?
Yeah, just a minor one. When are we going to consider the proposed amendments to our rules?
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Chief Clerk, enlighten, for Leader.
Floor Leader, as agreed to during the, the project, the sleep project for review of the rules of procedure, I believe the date given to the smaller committee, working committee by speaker was February, at the end of February, a draft, you know, of the outcome of that project, or, yeah, will be given to the committee on CHENCO to work further on it. Yes.
Thank you. I think I missed that, because I missed the after of the last day.
Yeah, when we started to discuss, you left already, so. The idea is to, we want to keep the momentum going for, you know, revisiting, reviewing our rules, and our thinking is to have something in place before the next Congress comes in. So it's, we're hoping that by our next special session, if any, that we will have something adopted for that.
Speaker.
Yes?
Along that line, I, I would strongly suggest that you include with that project
That's on the technology side of it. We're trying to?
Yeah, and I would maybe perhaps insert in the rules of procedures that Congress operate.
Well, we, we will review that, you know. It will go to, normally is assigned to CHENCO committee, but then after CHENCO does its deliberation, of which I'm sure you're a member of the CHENCO, so. And then it will come to the floor for our plenary discussions and amendments, if we have any, so. Maybe just take note of that. We'll take note of that.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Speaker, we should start implementing the new revised rules for the next Congress, and also try to do paperless proceedings of the Congress to save money and save the environment.
Well, that's our objective. Our effort is to make our deliberations, our legislative process, more efficient and at the same time transparent, and I think?
Are we in recess?
We are in recess. So those are good ideas. We still need to, we're working on even the administrative side, going paperless on our, you know, paperwork. Same within the legislative, the plenary. We can just have something like laptop, and we just use, so.
Just a reminder, Speaker.
Some of us who are not literate in technology, maybe we need more time to get used to that, but.
Well, Speaker, I'd rather see plastic less than paperless.
Oh, you have a pill. That's something we can always, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that. That's, that, that's would be a huge progress on the environmental side, to also have plastic less, styrofoam less. Okay. All right, are you clear now, Floor Leader, on the timeline for that? Okay. Congress is back in session. We're finished with miscellaneous, since there are no miscellaneous business. Item twenty-three, announcements. Chairman Wally?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No announcement.
Thank you. Chairman Figueroa, announcement? He's shaking his head, so let the record reflect, he's shaking his head. Vice Chairman Ned? No announcement? Okay, Chairman Perman?
Your committee HSA, no announcement.
Vice Chairman Aritos?
Thank you, Speaker. No announcement.
Vice Chairman Coleman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just a reminder to members on education that we have a hearing at one thirty today. Thank you.
Yes, of course, Education Committee always wants to keep its record as the committee with most oversight hearings. So that's a good trend to keep it. Vice Speaker, what do you have any? Okay, announcement. Okay, for Leader, you have any announcement and your question?
No announcement, Speaker, but just a question, whether we're still going down to Juke tomorrow, and if the A's are processed?
Well, for those of you who are unopposed, I'm sure you don't need to go to Juke. For us who are opposed, we need to be in Juke tomorrow. Yes, we're still going tomorrow. I think our DAs are being worked on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we stand in recess and come back at ten AM tomorrow.
Second. It's moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at ten. Those in favor of the motion say yes. Abols nay. Motion carried. Congress now stands in recess until tomorrow at ten in the morning.